Good evening. The time is now six of five. The Wazetta Public Schools Board of Education Special Regular Meeting for Monday, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five will please come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Heidi Kater?
Here.
Sheila Pryor, here. Sarah Johansson is absent. Paris Benday?
Here.
Valentina Ayers?
Here.
Dan Janestra?
Here.
Millen Suhoni?
Present.
Chase Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests. In which event, the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the materials. The recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Dan Janestra?
Aye.
Sarah Johansson is absent. Paris Benday?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor, yes. Heidi Kater?
Yes.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Millen Suhoni?
Yes. Thank you. We have an agenda. Okay, next we have the admin reports and recommendations. Executive Director of Finance and Operations Trevor Peterson will present the preliminary, preliminary two thousand and twenty five payable two thousand and twenty six levy certification. Trevor?
Yes, thank you. I'll wait a little bit for the presentation to come up. There it is. All right. So, good evening. Board Chair Suhoni, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. Thank you for allowing us to present the preliminary twenty five, twenty six levy cert- levy certification tonight. The finance team members and I have been working hard the last couple of months to bring the, the data for you tonight. In the board packet, you did receive a memo that has a little bit more information, a little more detailed information with some graphics and some, some more details and descriptions of certain things. So I will refer to that a couple of times. But for the most part, this presentation is a little more summary in nature. I would also encourage you, I, that's not a real easy presentation due in a linear fashion. So if there are questions that you think of, maybe wait till the end of the, the presentation because I trust they might be answered somewhere along the way. So getting started with that, looking at the levy certification timeline. So it's definitely a multi-step process. My, I think my first action in front of you was in July where we talked about the LTFM, our long-term facilities maintenance revenue application. So in July, the, the board is asked to approve that. That's really the first step in looking at the, in this case, it's the twenty five payable two thousand and twenty six levy. And going forward, you might hear me just refer to it as the payable twenty six or paid twenty six, just to keep that short. The next step then is in August, all districts are required to submit levy information into the MDE levy information system. So that takes place over the month of August. That brings us to September. So once the, the calendar flips to September, that's when MDE, that takes all of that information that the districts put into that system to start calculating what each preliminary levy for every district in the state looks like. After the, the approval tonight, we will submit that information to the county who uses this data to turn around and mail out the proposed property tax statements to each property owner. November is where a, a month with the special, with the general election where districts may hold referendums for operating levies or building bonds. And then in December, we'll be back again where I will have the, the truth and taxation public hearing and then ask for the final levy to be approved in December. So that is the, the timeline of the levy. For another, a little more of an overview too, when we say payable two thousand and twenty six, that means that, that's the funds that are collected from the taxpayers in calendar year twenty six. So the first half is due May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty six, second half due October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty six, which probably everybody knows is aware of that timeline. And then the school districts generally receive their portion of the taxes, of the property taxes sent from the county about two to three weeks after those collection dates. It's important to note that this does provide revenue for the district in fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven. I think I've said it at a, a previous board meeting, but this highlights that the finance team always seems to be working in, in three fiscal years. This week, we welcome the auditors onsite for, to look at our twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. We're living and breathing in twenty five, twenty six, and we're looking at the levy, which is revenue for the twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year. And when we say fiscal year, just a reminder that that does begin July first, our fiscal year runs July first through June thirtieth. And that is different from cities, counties and townships. So their budget year is actually January through December. So when they have a prelim- or levy report, their payable twenty six levy, our taxes do provide revenue for their twenty six calendar year. So a little bit of a different timeline between school districts, cities and counties and townships. The funding is highly regulated. So MDE does set a lot of the formulas which determine our revenue. Most of this revenue is based on specified amounts per pupil. There are a few other funding categories that are not based on pupil, but based on other things. Then they also calculate what the maximum authorized property tax levy is for each property, each parcel, as well as what that means then for the district as a whole. So the districts may levy less, but not more than the amount that's authorized by the state unless there's an approved referendum in, in November. So between now and the final levy in December. The state also does authorize school boards to submit referendums for operating capital needs to voters for approval. As with everything else, school finance related, it is, is not a simple system. It's very complex. There's about thirty nine pages of levy calculations that contains over fifty different revenue. And by revenue, I do mean aid and levy categories. The levy is based on two property tax bases, referendum market value and net tax capacity. That does get a little confusing, but I'll get into that a little bit more in a, in a future slide. It does contain four different funds, the general fund, community service fund, debt service fund, and then OPEB debt service fund. The last of which does not pertain to Wazetta Public Schools. We just have the first three. And then when property owners receive their property tax statements, it's divided into two different categories. Voter-approved levies and then other local levies. So what causes levies and property taxes to change from year to year? State law is the biggest one. So that's all those formulas that I talked about. So as formulas change, as the legislature puts things, changes up things, that definitely has an impact on every district's levy. Pupil units and district population, pupil units is another way to say enrollment. As I mentioned, that's a huge driver, a lot of these funding categories. The market value, property market values and tax capacity, not only of each property, but also the district as a whole. So as a property base, property market value and tax capacity grows throughout the district, that allows any levies to be spread across more properties for new properties that exist within the district. And then changing expenditures, some of these funding categories that I'll highlight do are based on actual expenditures that just, that the district incurs for various programs. All right. Looking more into these tax-based definitions. So the, the referendum market value, so that's the taxable market value of all taxable property in the school district excluding seasonal, recreational and agricultural land. There are some other really, really minor classifications as well, such as you have some managed forest land, secondary student or post-secondary student housing, private airports, those things are also not subject to tax capacity. They're based on the referendum market value. And really what that means is there are four funding categories in the levy. The operating referendum, which is voter-approved, then you have local optional equity revenue and transition revenue, which is non-voter-approved. Those classifications, those property classifications of seasonal recreation and ag land are exempt from paying property taxes on those four funding categories. That leaves the other tax base, which is the net tax capacity. So that is the value of property which property taxes will be levied against for all other school funding formulas calculated by multiplying a property's taxable market value by its assigned classification rate, which is determined by the legislature. So some examples of that. If you, if your property is classified as a residential homestead, you will get taxed, or your net task capacity is one percent of everything up to five hundred thousand dollars and one point two five for anything over five hundred thousand dollars. Meanwhile, a five hundred thousand dollar commercial property has a net tax capacity rate of one point five percent for everything up to five hundred thousand and then two percent for anything above a hundred and fifty thousand. So again, different, same property values, but different net tax capacity based on your classification. Getting into the numbers for our district, this, you'll, you'll see a few graphs that compare our actual tax levy for payable in two thousand and twenty five versus what we're proposing tonight for a preliminary levy payable in two thousand and twenty six. Overall, with these three funds, we do have a four point seven four percent increase. You can see the general fund is just under seventy eight point six million dollars or four point oh nine. Community service is up about a hundred and twenty three thousand or five point seven eight percent. And then debt service is one point three million, which is seven point two one percent. Just for reference, that four point seven four, last year we did have a four point two six percent increase. The year before it was four point nine. And the year before that, it was two point six three. So it just gives you a little reference as to what this, how this compares to the previous three years. Here is the same total levy broken out into different categories. So that top one, the truth and taxation category, as a reminder, those are the those are the descriptions that property owners will see on their property tax statement, voter-approved levies and then other local levies. The voter-approved levies is pretty self-explanatory, but it includes all of the successful referendums that are voted by the taxpayers for either building bonds, operating levies, capital project levies or technology levies. The other local levies is exactly what it is, everything else. So of the, the two point five million dollar increase that we see in the voter-approved levies, two point one, or two point one million of that is for the operating referendum due to increased enrollment as well as the inflationary increase that are on those operating referendums that were on the ballot language when they were passed. The remaining hundred, three hundred thousand dollars are so attributed to capital projects and technology levies. And those are due to the increase in the district net tax capacity. That is the, the formula that's used for those. The bottom one then looks at the tax base. So I talked about the referendum market value. So that, it's roughly half. A little bit more than that, about forty six percent or forty five and a half percent is our referendum market value. And then the remaining is based on net tax capacity. And there's another slide that, that shows that in a little greater detail. Diving into the general fund a little bit. So this is one that there is an exhibit in that board, that memo that I included in your board packet that has all of the, the funding categories broken down a little bit more detail. That would be hard to see on this slide. So I broke them out into these four categories instead. So just to give you a taste of what's, what, what might be the main drivers in each of those four. The, the referendum market value voter-approved levy, this is, this contains only the revenue from the voter-approved operating referendum. I mentioned too that those are based on an inflationary factor. So for payable twenty six, the increase in, for inflation allowance is about two point six nine percent. And that increases the per pupil amount from two, two thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars and eighty four cents per pupil up to two thousand, two hundred and ninety nine dollars and one cent. So when you add that on to what our increased enrollment is, that does increase our revenue for our operating cap, our operating referendum about two point one million dollars. You will see that the total change is one point six. So of that, we did have, last year we had about six hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in prior year adjustments, which, which are pretty common. And this year we did not have that. We had about a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. So this is a good time to talk about those prior year adjustments. A lot of these levy categories that we're talking about are called what's, they're self-adjusting or self-correcting funding formulas where we do our best to estimate what our enrollment's going to be. We do our best to estimate what expenditures are going to be. We plug that in into the system that the MDE levy information system that I talked about. But we're still trying to project out for fiscal year two thousand and twenty seven, which is difficult to do. So once the actual data comes in, then MDE takes, takes advantage of that to put in prior year adjustments in every levy. So you do see that it's kind of a catch-up. Some of them might be negative, some of them might be positive. The goal is to get those as close to zero as possible. That's not always the case. That always, that can't always happen. And there are a lot of errors that happen as well, both on the district side as well as MDE side. But just know that usually what you see is a pretty flat levy from year to year as those adjustments kind of take care of themselves. Moving on to the referendum market value, the other local levies. So this is where the three other funding categories are, are, they're combined to be local optional revenue, equity revenue and the transition revenue. For that current year, that did increase about three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And again, this year we have less in adjustment than the previous year, which is good. And that's, that's good for the taxpayers to show a dollar increase or a percentage increase to have some of those negative adjustments or adjustments be a little bit less than what we've experienced in the past couple of years. Moving on to the net tax capacity voter-approved. So this is where the capital projects and technology levies lie. Those are voter-approved levies that are calculated on net tax capacity. We do have, we currently do have two existing levy authorities for capital or capital project or technology levy. One of those, when the ballot, when the ballot is presented to the taxpayers for those kind of levies, it is based on the net tax capacity, a percentage of the net tax capacity for the entire district. So one of those has, is being calculated at two point six six zero seven five percent of the net tax capacity. So as the net tax capacity of the district grows over the years, so does the revenue that is generated from these levies. The other one that we have, and that one, so that one brings in about six point six million dollars. The other one is a little bit lower. It's at two point three six, two six, six percent of our net tax capacity, which brings in about five point eight million dollars. For the last one, net tax capacity, other local levies, that is primarily our long-term facilities maintenance. That makes up the majority of that one. And I, I think it's been well documented in some of the budget presentations that this one has seen a few swings in the past few years. This is one of those that's based on those actual expenditures. So we do our best to put into the long-term facilities maintenance plan what we might expect to see on any given year for LTFM projects and expenditures. If we spend less than that, then that is reconciled in subsequent years in a negative adjustment. During the COVID years, we did see a significant adjustment of a negative eight point eight million dollars. Again, that has been presented in, in the form of the budget this year. And these are always a couple of years behind too. It takes a couple of years for these to get caught up. This year we're seeing less of a, a negative adjustment of about four point two million dollars, four point three million dollars. The other thing to talk about here, one of the other bigger ones that fall in the general fund is our lease levy. I only bring that up because we have seen a pretty good roller coaster over the last few years of what is, what some of those prior year adjustments were in our lease levy. From fiscal year, I think it was last year, so payable twenty five goes back multiple years. And the, so the most, the furthest back year that would go would then be fiscal year twenty two. So MDE did recognize an error in our lease levy which prompted us to have a adjustment of about one point four million dollars that they were excluding from our lease levy authority in previous years. This year, we are seeing that that is something that the MDE continues to work with. What makes that a little bit complicated is for the lease levy, there are, there are five data factors that are being compiled into the lease levy. One of them is estimated lease payments for payable twenty six. You, we enter what our fiscal year twenty five actual payments were. We enter what our actual two thousand and twenty four expenditures were, two thousand and twenty three expenditures, and then any adjustments. So it, it, it takes into effect five years essentially, or five calculations to figure out lease levy. So we hope after the MDE had their error corrected last year with that adjustment, that we start to see that level off a little bit. Again, this is one that there are some questions out there from districts of how this might look. One of those things that MDE is currently working on. And just full disclosure, this, that is one that may change between now and when we present our final levy in December. So we're keeping an eye on that one. Moving on to community service fund. So community service fund is definitely the smallest of the three funds that we have for levies. But it is, does provide significant revenue to our community service fund. A lot of the, the biggest change here would be the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase in the school age care. This is one of those that's based on estimated expenditures. So we are estimating that in fiscal year twenty seven, we will spend one point two million dollars on, the, the technical term is called disabled school age care. So it's expenditures that qualify to meet the needs of students that might not otherwise be able to be met in, you know, during a regular before or after school time. They require one-on-one needs, those kind of things. So as enrollment in Wazetta Kids continues to increase, so does that number. And you might look at that twenty one point eight three percent to be like, well, that's a pretty good jump, which it is. But we've also experienced is. But we've also experienced 24% increase in the number of enrolled students in one year, and 36% going back two years. So that increase does reflect correspondently to what we are seeing in total enrollment in YZDA kids. This is one of those self-adjusting or self-correcting levies. So if in fiscal year 2027, we, let's say for example, spend only $1.1 million, there will be a negative adjustment of $100,000 the following year. The other one to pay attention to here is the early childhood family education. You look at that to say, why is that such a decrease? That is based on our district census, not our enrollment, so the, the total number of children under the age of five in our district. That has not decreased to what you see on the screen, but the ECFE revenue is an aid and levy split. So as that changes, as our census, census changes from year to year, so does the core, the, the percentage that you might see with aid and levy. So for example, last year, the total ECFE revenue, and total, I mean by, by state aid and east and levy revenue, was about $753,000, of which the 531 that you can see on the screen was for levy, and the remaining 222,000 was in the form of state aid. Moving to payable 26, the total revenue is increasing from $753,000 up to $929,000. However, based on the change in our net tax capacity and the census, the levy amount of that is the $456,000 you see. So it is $74,000 less in levy, but it's about $250,000 more in aid. So they are not receiving less revenue in ECFE. Instead, they're, they're receiving about $275,000 more, or $175,000 more total revenue. The top one there too, the, the basic levy, can see a little note there that that's based on the district population. So that is, districts receive $6.35 per number of people that are in your district, plus $1 for, for youth service. And then there's some after-school allotments as well, or allocations as well. For us, that totals about $590,000. You see that hasn't changed, that did not change from last year. That's only changed when administration brings forth to the board in the form of a resolution to approve a change in the district population. Districts are held harmless if the population actually decreases. So we did bring to the board, I think it was a couple of years ago, a resolution to change the district population or the official, official district population. And that's something we monitor each year. And if it does warrant, if the increase in district population is enough that warrants us to bring a resolution to the board, we will do so. We did not feel the need to do that this year, just based on the, what the difference between the population from last year and this year is. And then lastly is the debt service fund. This one's pretty straightforward. It's mostly comprised of two funding sources, debt service, that top one, which is 105% of our principal and interest payments. I think I've said it before, but 105% is required for districts to levy, to make their scheduled principal and interest payments. That is in the event, if district taxpayers are for some reason not paying their property tax bills, the 5% additional will hold, will allow the district to receive enough revenue in theory to make those payments without having to dip into their general fund dollars or other funds to account for the lack of property tax payments that were made. Our district is historically really good about that, so that has not been a, an issue. And then what that leads to then is that second line, which is a reduction for debt excess. So as that additional 5% adds up over time, there does come the time where MDE says it's time to pull some of that back. That did happen last year, and a very, very minimal 40 cents this year, which is a little bit weird. And then the other one is long-term facilities maintenance. That one increased about $684,000. That is due to the capital facilities bond that was recently sold to, for the construction of West Middle School. This is very hard to see, but one thing I want to illustrate on here is there's about 10 market values, estimated market values for residential homesteads. Then you have about five for commercial, commercial industrial, and then four apartments. So we look at that 4.74% total increase, and I mentioned as a district's net tax capacity grows, that really offsets a, a lot of the, the impact for the property tax increase for school districts. So in looking at this, if, if, if a property owner had a market value, residential homestead market value about $500,000, despite the district property taxes or tax levy going up 4.74%, that property owner would see an increase of about 1.9%. So again, it's just that 4.74 is being spread across more, more properties, more parcels, more taxpayers. Similarly, then, commercial industrial will have about a 0.7 to 0.8% increase, and then apartments about a 2.1%. And I, I do want to go back to this slide just to say that this is all based on a lot of assumptions. The assumption is based on the net tax capacity truly does grow as to what the assumptions are. It also does assume that our final levy is what we are presenting in the preliminary levy. And it also assumes that one property, the, the market value of the property in question stays the same from year to year. We know that has not happened very frequently from, from year to year, but in order to have an apples-to-apples comparison, that, that, that is one of those assumptions made in this graph. As a district, the total market value of all of our properties in the district is just shy of $22 billion. You can see how that is broken out percentage-wise between residential homestead, other residential, commercial industrial, non-qualifying agriculture, qualifying agriculture, and then seasonal rec. Moving to the middle column, you'll see that that's the referendum market value. So the second to the bottom there, remember that agricultural land is exempt from referendum market value. Those, those funding categories that are calculated based on referendum market value, that's why you see a zero there. You might look at the bottom line to say, I thought seasonal recreational property was exempt from referendum market value as well. That is true to, to the largest degree, but there are a few, even though they might be classified as seasonal recreational property, they are subject to those taxes, and, and that's for cabins that might have too high of a value, where the, they might be in question as to, is this really a seasonal rec property, or is it a residential homestead? And that also includes, that $6.8 million does also include municipal golf courses and a few other things. So not every seasonal recreational classification is exempt from referendum, referendum market value, but you can see majority of it is. And then over on the right, you can see the breakdown of net tax capacity. So I, when I talked about net tax capacity, I mentioned that commercial and industrial generally have a higher tax rate than residential homesteads. So you'll see a little bit of a shift between the market value where commercial and industrial will go up, and the residential homestead will go down. What's really important to understand with our district too is what you want to see when, when you start having some conversations about what referendum might look like, if, if you're going to go out to voters for different things, whether it be building bonds or operating levies. It's important to know what you label that as. So what, what does the ballot language say? What's it called? What's the funding source? Because if you're a district, let's say in northwestern Minnesota, that has a lot of qualifying agricultural land, and you go out and do a, an operating referendum, those property owners are going to be exempt from paying those taxes, which then creates more burden upon those who will be paying it. So that, that's important to, to note. Likewise, if you are a district, let's say Walker, Hackensack, Akeley, for your northern folks up there, you will see a lot more of the seasonal rec property as to, versus what you might see in our district. Having us be very consistent from column one, two, and three is important, just because you, it's, it's not real crucial. It puts us in a position where we can go out or seek funding for what we want, rather than having to play that game as to what might be best, or how might we have to frame the language in order to not take into consideration what some of those exempt or non-exempt properties are. So to see that split is, is a good thing. It, it benefits us. All right. So this is the, the final slide. Just again, a summary of what the recommendation might be. We, we are looking at a preliminary levy for payable 26 of $100,885,586.29, which is a 4.74% increase. As, as, so as, right now, the, the board will have two options. We can approve it at the maximum, or we can approve it at a specific dollar amount. I, I have been in this, I've been doing this for quite a while, and I always like to tell the story. The recommendation is to do it at maximum, be, because doing that does still allow us the flexibility to change this and levy for less if we so choose at the board meeting in December. If you approve it at a specific dollar amount, no matter what happens between now and December, that is the dollar amount, that is the maximum dollar amount you could do. You could also do less, but it does not provide you the flexibility if there's any changes between now and December. I, again, the, the story I want to tell is I am aware of only one time, one district in the state, and I don't remember the district, it doesn't matter, chose to do a specific dollar amount instead of the maximum at the September preliminary levy. Once they were, once they adjusted their enrollment projections, once MDA, MDE had found a, a couple of things that weren't right on their preliminary levy, they ended up losing about 5 point, about $5.5 million in revenue that they could not levy for because they approved it at a specific dollar amount. So again, I, I want to stress that we still do reserve the right and have the flexibility and ability to, to levy less, not more than the maximum, but we can do that in December and have those discussions then. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, and otherwise, ask the recommended approval.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Trevor. So the recommended action, colleagues, is to approve the preliminary 2025 payable 2026 levy limitation and certification at the maximum amount allowed by state. Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. It was a real joy having our CFAC committee be a part of the introduction and summary of what this levy approval would look like. So thank you so much for taking community member and board members' questions. Thank you to the finance team for all their hard-working dedication. We know that things today were a little bit fast-paced in the morning with some alternative numbers coming out, but thank you so much for, you know, very quickly meeting the moment. So it means a lot, and we're so grateful, and thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to say the same. I think the way you explained, and this is our second time hearing this presentation, so I'm sure I cannot present it back, but it resonated. And especially when you presented with CFAC members, which are again our community members, you could see that it resonated well with them as well. Again, specifically about 4.78 levy to the max, not to the dollar or lesser percentage, right? That doesn't mean that your tax bill is going to go up by 4.78%. So I think the range that you have shown by property, by classification, I think that resonates well, and that helps tell the story. And then the last, but not least, is the YZDA distribution of those qualifying or non-qualifying classifications. We don't have whole lot of exclusions, if you will. So we are not going to burden taxpayers or certain taxpayers. So yes, it's an increased tax bill, but it is still lower because it's going to get distributed across, you know, broader population. So I think those were some of the points that resonated really well with that CFAC committee. So again, just wanted to share that with the group. So again, thank you for simplifying it. I'm sure once we start peeling the onion, there'll be more questions, but this was really helpful. And Jack and Jen, you guys were super helpful in CFAC meeting as well. So thank you.
Yes, Valentina.
I have a question. Did we have any time, such kind of situation when we actually came, I mean, at the, at the end of, it's, we, we, you came down with a percentage, I mean with a, what we act, what you actually take. Right now, we're taking maximum, that's what I'm trying to say. But did we have any event situation when we actually, when we had final meeting, when a board came?
I don't know for sure. I would, I would guess yes. I, I think with the amount of work that has to be done between, in September, first of all, because I also want to acknowledge what, what Dan had said and apologize for the, the late minute, our last-minute changes today, but that's how we roll. That's how it does. And I would anticipate we'll see a, a new report out tomorrow morning that'll be different. Not, maybe not for our district, but maybe, maybe for other districts. So I have a hard time believing that it, it's never not been lower. I don't know that for sure, but I, I certainly, if it hasn't been for us, it has been for other districts. And it, it seems like if there is a year where that might happen, this could be the year, just because there seems to be a lot of changes yet to be made at the MDE level within, for various districts. And we, our hope is that it doesn't change a lot between now and the final. If any changes that what we're presented tonight and December will be clearly communicated, just to make sure everybody understands what the changes were. What I don't know for sure is if, if it was ever approved or voted to, to under levy. So we, we use the term maximum, that, that allows us to levy up to the maximum. And then the opportunity to, for the board to under levy is maybe a different question. So I don't know if that's ever happened, nor am I aware of any time happening where the final levy came in less than the preliminary levy, but I'm sure it has happened. And I'm sure both have happened at some time.
Yeah, I'd just offer some clarification to Valentina. I'm not sure I fully understand your question, but I think it could be interpreted two ways. One, would the state ever come back with a lower maximum levy amount for the school district? I think that would be yes.
That would be yes, correct.
And another way that I might have interpreted the question is, has the district ever levied to the maximum in September and then done less than the maximum in December? This will be my 18th time through this in YZDA. I don't think we've ever not levied the maximum in September or in December, and I would not recommend that we do that.
Yeah. It, it would be rare. It would be rare. It, it certainly does happen for multiple districts, but I don't know the history of, of YZDA either, other further, further back than Chase can provide. But yeah, it would be, it would be extremely rare for that to happen.
Okay, I have three questions, and maybe now four. Chase just said that the state has come back with, by reducing the maximum levy in December compared to what it was in September. That would be a tough one for, for the district. How do, how does one handle that?
If, if the, if the maximum is less than what we presented now, I, I guess the good thing about that is because this is for fiscal year 26, 27 revenue, we're really not making any decisions or huge decisions yet based on that. I, I think if it's one of those things where a district was projecting to see a, a revenue increase next year or in fiscal year 27, and then comes back, gets a little surprised the wrong direction and says we're actually receiving a far less revenue, especially in the general fund revenue, general fund levy, you can't do too much with the debt service. That one's pretty much set in stone in what it is. But certainly, if that were to happen with the general fund, it, it might take a district by surprise. And it could also be, to, to Valentina's point, if there are some adjustments that come in, which increases the maximum, then we might have some discussions about that as well. But yeah, I, I think it is the, the start of what fiscal year 27 revenue is, and a significant portion of that formula for us. So every little bit makes a, a difference. So if, I, I do think if it is higher or lower, that everything takes, reserves the right to have a pretty good, hard look at it.
Okay, thank you. So you talked about debt, debt service just now. So what is, what's the reason that YZDA Public Schools does not have an OPEB debt, debt service fund? It's not applicable to us. What, if it's very complicated, I don't want to know.
Then, then you don't want to know. No, I, I, history lesson, I think this goes back to about 2008, when OPEB became a thing, the legislature basically The legislature basically acknowledged saying districts are having a very difficult time paying the retirement benefits for all employees that they have. So they are going to allow school boards the opportunity to levy to make those payments. So at at that time, you were given the option to A, do it or not. And if you did decide to do it, you could have done either a, I'm forgetting the terms, a revocable trust or irrevocable trust. So if you if you did decide to levy for it, that is certainly a district's decision. And then each year, as those OPEB retirement benefits came to be paid, you could use your trust proceeds to pay those. So basically reimburse on yourself if you so choose. My understanding is that Wayzetta decided not to do the the debt service portion of it and just invest in themselves with the with the OPEB trust.
Okay, sounds good. That that was okay. That was understandable. Thank you.
Good.
Third question is, why would a district approve a spending less than the maximum allowed? Under what circumstances? You see, you gave an example of a district that did that and then there was trouble.
Yeah, I good question. I I'm I don't know. Maybe one of the, I'm just throwing examples out there, but if a district saw a significant increase in net tax capacity, so let's say they had a capital projects levy that was based on the net tax capacity and the net tax capacity of the district increased thirty percent, which is going to be which is going to provide a a pretty good increase to each property owner. And it's and we'll say it's a small district where all of a sudden that gets to be pretty significant. Maybe a district come back and say that that's a pretty big jump for our taxpayers. We're going to under levy in the capital projects levy. And again, that's just an example. Some of the other ones might be based on where they are exempt. You might see this a little bit more with with districts that have a lot of commercial property, allows it a seasonal rec, a lot of qualifying agriculture, where if there is a inflationary, so in the term of like an operating referendum, if the inflationary factor is too large and those are and those qualifying agriculture and seasonal rec are exempt from paying on the operating referendum, and that puts a lot of more of the burden onto the residential homestead and commercial, maybe that would be another opportunity for them to be like, let's let's cool off on this a little bit. But again, those are just examples I can think of off the top of my head and not real examples.
So you knew. You said you didn't know, but yeah, you knew.
I not I don't know of those that happening. And I'm just saying those are two examples. Yeah.
Good, thank you. And then one last question about the property tax portion. So we have our general fund revenue split into state aid, property tax, a little bit of federal federal aid, and then some other revenue, right? State aid, as far as I know, is based on per pupil revenue, right? It's whatever, seven, eight thousand, whatever it is. Property tax, am I correct in understanding that the property tax comes from the levy? And if let's say the levy is a hundred million, we get that irrespective of what the enrollment is. So it is not associated with per pupil. Is that correct?
That is correct. The the category, the funding categories are based on enrollment projections. But if I go back, oh, I lost my presentation now, but are you working on that? So I I'll just show this, because if you remember of our hundred million, seventy eight million of it or so was for the general fund. Right now, we will take that amount and that will be the revenue that we have for local property taxes for fiscal year twenty seven will be that exact number. Whatever that turns out to be, not tonight, but after December, that will be the number. Of course, yes, that is based on some enrollment projections. And should those enrollment projections be off one way or the other, the levy amount will change in subsequent years, not in this year. It will not change the revenue amount for fiscal year twenty seven. It would change for fiscal year twenty eight then.
Okay, thank you. So before we, oh, you have a question? Heidi, yeah, go ahead.
You had mentioned that if the population changes, there's a certain point where you would bring it to us so that we can change our population. What's that point?
Well, I would guess that would be anytime that it increases, I would hope.
Substantially, or is there a, you know, like if it increases by two, you may?
Yeah, well, let's just, I mean, our our district population this last time around is about seventy four, not about, it's seventy four thousand fifteen. So if it becomes seventy five thousand, seventy six thousand, I guess that's up for different interpretation. But I would think that anytime it increases, as long as the resolution is not a hard thing to do, that that brings in more revenue for our community service fund, that I would recommend that, but yeah.
All right, thank you. So I just before before we go back to the recommendation and the vote, I want to thank Trevor for a for a fantastic job, not only of presenting, but the way you answer the questions, I think is is very good. I want to thank the finance committee, Director Johansson, who is not here today with us, Director Bendey and Director Janestra, and also the CFAC. The input and I think the feedback from the community is just incredible. I think there are some members, if I'm not mistaken, I used to be on that committee a couple of years ago, that have been on that committee for decades. And and we value that. We appreciate their their wisdom, their experience, and their feedback. So thank you, Trevor. All right, colleagues, the recommended action again is to approve the preliminary twenty twenty five payable twenty twenty six levy limitation and certification at the maximum amount allowed by the state. Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Heidi Kater?
Yes.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson is absent. Paris Bendey?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Melon Sione?
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you, Sheila. Okay, this concludes the Wayzetta Public Schools Special Regular Board Meeting for tonight. The next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, October thirteenth. The time is now six fifty three. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. The Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education Special Regular Meeting for Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five is adjourned.